Good evening, everybody. This time, we're going to get started. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, I would like a motion to approve the agenda for April 20th, 2023 as presented.
Second.
Director Bushgar. Director Lang.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove item 11F, purchases over 7,500, number 7, curriculum associates.
First, second. Second?
Second.
Director Bushgar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Next, we need a motion to approve the amended agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Director Cook. Director Ponder. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
Next up, we have special recognitions, Jennifer Stules.
Thank you, Mr. Bertrand. This evening, we are excited to recognize Riley Donner, who is a senior at Francis Howell High School and participates in the Lewis and Clark Career Center Program. Riley recently finished first place out of 175 competitors at a high school welding competition. In addition to a $6,000 welder and a welding jacket, Riley was awarded a $17,900 check from the Missouri Welding Institute. Following graduation, he plans to cash in his award and attend Missouri Welding Institute with the goal to become a traveling pipe fitter. Pipe welder, I'm sorry. Here to tell us more about Riley in this honor is Dr. Smith, Assistant Director of the Lewis and Clark Career Center.
Good evening. So Riley, he competed this past year in the 13th Annual Welding Competition hosted by the Missouri Welding Institute. It's actually closer to about 250 people, and they weren't just from Missouri. Missouri, Arkansas, Texas, Kansas, Alabama, Iowa, Kentucky, a good chunk of the Midwest. And he came in first place out of all of them. He got into, so our welding program is a two-year program for all juniors and seniors in St. Charles County. It is our most competitive program to get into. And so he kind of put himself out there initially, and he's excelled ever since. His instructor said that Mr. Besselman, his instructor, Mr. Besselman, said that Riley comes in early, stays late. They're already there for two and a half hours every single day. And because of the unique scheduling, we have snow days in St. Charles School District. Francis Howell may not have snow days on that particular day. We'll still get kids that come in. So even though they're technically off school and will get penalized for not being at Lewis and Clark, students like Riley will still come in, they come in, they practice, instructors will be there. They'll come in on Saturdays after he graduates from here. Bear in mind, he'd be graduating within the next year from this welding institute. He has six-figure earning potential prior to hitting 20. We've already had a few of them coming out of our welding program that are, they're doing very well for themselves. So I'd like to introduce Riley Donner.
Congratulations.
That's awesome.
Good for you.
Thank you. Thank you. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I know you.
The day lady is shorter, you know.
Riley, right here in the middle with Paul.
Okay. Next, we would like to recognize Francis Howell Central High School students Peyton Shepherd and Aiden Hernandez, who brought home state champion titles at the Missouri State High School Activities Association Wrestling Tournament held at Mizzou. Peyton and Aiden were two of 36 student athletes that attended the tournament from our district. The students not only earned state titles, but also helped their team rack up some impressive achievements as well. And I'd like to invite Activities Director Scott Harris to the podium to tell you more about our award-winning wrestling program at Howell Central.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Marpos, Executive Administration, Board of Education. Thank you guys so much for honoring these two young men. It's very exciting, and I'm very honored and proud to be up here. Before I say a few words about them, I'd like to say a few words about the man who got them here, Steve Cross, who is retiring from our Francis Howell School District this year after 34 years in our district. He was the assistant coach at Howell North, both state championship team in 1991. He's the only head coach in the history of Francis Howell Central High School. And a few accolades about him. 263 dual wins, five undefeated seasons, an unbeaten streak of 50 duels, 14 state's top 10 finishes, 19 district titles, seven team GAC titles, five Final Four finishes to state, 26 tournament titles, 67 individual district champions, 91 state medalists, and nine state champions, including the two here tonight. So in his final duty as a house and a wrestling coach, Steve Cross is going to introduce our guys here.
I'm extremely proud of these two young men and just ecstatic to be able to come up and present them these awards tonight. I had to write down all their accomplishments. So starting off with Peyton Shepherd. Peyton Shepherd was the 126-pound state champion this year. He had a season record of 40 and 7. He finishes out at Francis Howell Central with a record of 157 and 22, and that's fifth all-time on the list of Francis Howell Central wrestlers. He's a four-time GAC champion, a three-time district champion, a four-time state qualifier, a three-time state medalist, taking fourth as a freshman, fifth as a junior, and first, obviously, as a senior. He has eight varsity letters. So that covers three sports, wrestling, soccer, and tennis. He's second-team All-Metro this year, and he plans to attend the University of Central Missouri on a wrestle, to wrestle there. Peyton Shepherd. Next is 165-pound state champion, Aiden Hernandez. Aiden, this year, had a 29-1 record. He had a shortened season because of an injury at the beginning of the year. I tore a tendon in his hand the first football game of the year. He has a career record of 161 and 14, which is fourth all-time at Francis Howell Central. He is a three-time GAC champ, a three-time district champ, a four-time state medalist, taking fifth as a freshman, sixth as a sophomore, third as a junior, and then winning the title this year. He was also voted co-GAC Wrestler of the Year this year. He has 12 varsity letters in three sports. So that's, you do the math, that's all four years in all three sports. St. Charles County Athlete of the Year, Howell Central Scholar-Athlete of the Year. He'll be visiting Arizona State this weekend on an official visit for wrestling, and he was first-team All-Metro. Aiden Hernandez.
All right, and finally, our student board representative this month is from Francis Howell High School, and Dr. Dave Woodlock, principal, is here to introduce her.
All right, good evening, Board, Dr. Rumpus, Exec Council, and patrons gathered. My distinct pleasure here tonight is to introduce our student school board representative, Lana Pitzman. First, I want to recognize her parents, Ava Pfeifer and Kurt Pitzman, who are here to share in the celebration. Also, I want to express our gratitude for raising such a wonderful young lady. Obviously, the school board representative, like she has all the statistics you would look for. She's top 15 in percentage of her class, 4.2 GPA, participates in five or six different clubs. It's just a tremendous Viking by any measure. So the question is, what brings her here tonight? And so the answer is, her leadership is outstanding. And what, as I thought about this award tonight, I reflected on some organizational leadership research by MIT, where they were looking at just a very simple concept of what makes the most effective leaders? Is it really high-intelligent people in a small group working together? Or is it more of just your average person? Now, this is MIT, I can't guarantee these were your average people in these studies, but that was the concept, is what works better. And what they found was that it was the group of ordinary people. And the reason was because they listened to each other, they sought ideas from each other. There was no hogs and logs, as we talked about, like nobody talked all the time, or another person just sat back. And so they were able to hear a lot of ideas and build consensus together. Meanwhile, the group of high performers tended to want to stand out individually. They wanted to be the smartest, the best. And so that dynamic in the group prevented them from having the best outcomes. And as I look back at Lana's career, I've had the pleasure of getting to know her and my student advisory council, that is who she is. Now, at Francis Howell, you may not know, we have a tremendous homecoming dance that thousands of kids from all over St. Charles come to. She is at the center of that, working with the DJ, working with the sponsor, making sure the court is lined up, making sure ninth-grade students who've never been to a dance know where to go and what to do. She's involved heavily in charity work. Our school and our student council is heavily involved with Friends of Kids with Cancer and St. Jude's Hospital. Again, that's a key element, that she wants to be successful. But most of all, I think what stands out is she tries to bring everybody together. Talking with her, she talks as the president, she enjoys most that there's people from all of the school and student council. It's not just people that are good at one thing. It's people that are good in lots of different things and have lots of different interests so that the club can gather those ideas and produce the best things to go forward to help all the students in the school succeed. So I'm certainly not the only person that feels this way. I've heard from many students, many teachers, that really have a lot of respect for her. She was given the Golden Helmet Award by one of her teachers this spring for outstanding accomplishment in high school. So for all these reasons and more, I am very proud of her and happy to present her tonight as a Francis Howell Student School Board Representative.
Lana, welcome.
Thank you.
Director Spiglitz will take care of me down there. Could you ask questions, make comments, anything to vote?
All right, now it is my pleasure to introduce Director of Alternative Learning, Dr. Will Mandepole. He's going to present our best practice tonight on the district's process around threat assessment and how it plays a role in keeping our kids safe. Dr. Mandepole.
Good evening, Board, Executive Cabinet. Really jealous that I'm not going to get to take a picture after we're done tonight. I'm going to be talking tonight about a practice that we just started this year. So while this is something we're very excited about, it's going to take two or three years before we're going to see that we have everyone trained. It's going to be consistent in all our buildings. But this is the beginning, and we hope that we continue to build from it. So I want to first start with the why. We have a lot of administrators in our district, counselors, licensed mental health professionals, and each one of them has a level of training to understand how to support students when things are happening. Whether there's a serious threat, a threat of violence against a school, a threat of a bomb threat, someone bringing a firearm, there's threats that happen every day. Threats when students get mad, I'm going to kill so-and-so, I'm going to beat them up after school. And we always have to evaluate those. As we started talking '21 and right at the beginning of '22, there was an event, unfortunately, these happen all too often, in Oxford High School up in Michigan. Four individuals were killed. And what sparked our attention with this event is the information that came out right after, talking about the counselor being directly involved with the student and having a conference with the student and their parents. There being some suspicion that the student was, had purchased, or the family purchased a weapon recently. Just so many triggers that should have led people to do a little more. And on that day that he was, you know, speaking to the counselor and the family, he went out and ended up killing several and injuring others in the building. And I think we saw that as maybe more could have been done, and how can we make sure and prevent that happening here at Francis Howell? We recognize a need for consistency. I mean, people need to know when I report something like this, when someone sees something like this, that there's going to be the same action taken in any of our buildings. And then we want to really focus on prevention, right? We have a lot of security systems in the schools, whether it's something like the security vestibles or cameras. But ideally, we just don't want this to happen at all, so we don't ever have to utilize any of those things. This is a quote from Dr. Cornell. Dr. Cornell is the individual who created the threat assessment that we'll be talking about. But this is kind of, we should prevent shootings rather than simply prepare for them. That should be our goal every day. And of course, this is the big thing, that we want to make sure it never happens in our schools. But there's a lot of little things that happen every day, whether it's, you know, the fights that may happen and other things that we want to make sure don't occur. So we had a discussion amongst the academic team about what we should do. I believe it was January of 2022. February and April, we pulled some folks together from the district administrators, counselors. We asked our SROs, our safety manager, and we just had to talk about, well, what are we doing right now? Is it consistent? What would happen if Francis Howell High, what would happen if Francis Howell Central? And we just saw some slight differences in practice that made us realize we need to tighten up these systems. And we went and pulled a group together in May. Community, you know, resource officers, our safety managers, principals, our education support counselors, counselors, members of our teachers' union, our district clinical psychologists that works with us. And we all looked at the different models that were available. These were the four models that we reviewed. We tried to focus our attention on models that were being used in other districts, models that had some research behind them, and make sure that we were going to get something of high quality. And we used the U.S. Department of Homeland Security's guidelines to help create a rubric to evaluate each one of these models. Each one of them had positive and negative points, but what we ended up going with was the CSTACK model, the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. And with this model, we saw several things. It was evidence-based. Dr. Cornell, University of Virginia, is the one that developed this model. And they have over 20 years of research behind it. In some areas, for those who like research, even controlled studies around the threat assessment model, which is something that you don't always get to see in a situation like this. It was clear, it was simple. Our one-day training really taught us how to use the model, and so that's a plus. You don't want something that's going to be too complicated for people to understand. And it really took a whole-school approach, so looking at kids and making sure that we're not just trying to deal with those high-leverage or significant situations, but everything that could happen in a school day. Focused on prevention, it had a continuum of interventions that were built into it. So the little things that happen, threatening to fight someone after school, to threats of big violence that could be, you know, popping up on social media, threats that kids are making to others. It was a team approach, and I'll get into that a little bit more here in a minute. Over 20 years of research, and it's out of the University of Virginia's Youth Violence Project. So the team approach is really important to us. We have a lot of smart people in our district, but none of them should be making individual decisions about this. They need to be doing this together to make sure that we don't miss anything. That's the scary thing, especially about the big threats that could occur. We don't want to miss anything. So, you know, if a counselor hears something that's happening in the school, they need to consult with the principal. They may need to pull in their SRO. We want everyone talking. And so as we trained on this model, those teams were all present, which was very important so that we could kind of build some common understanding. The threat assessment has three big components. The first is identification. You have to have something come to us. It could be something as simple as a threat made in a hallway in passing or the social media posts that are made by a student. It could be students, you know, hearing another talk about guns or violence or some other disturbing-type topics that raises some red flags. But we need to find a way to identify students and make sure that we've got some processes there. We've been talking more and more about, there are channels, and our students in general are very good about communicating with adults in the building, but we need to make those stronger. And so there's been a lot of conversations about how do we create more assistance for that? The evaluation process, once we've identified a student in need, how do we know where they're at? Is there potential for the threat to occur? And so there are several processes and layers within processes. Through the interview, through their mental health professionals, that we can really dig into what's happening, and of course, involving law enforcement. And then there's the intervention, trying to understand what we need to do to prevent any action that could occur in the future. They really identified two big types of threats. Now, the first one is the transient. That's the bad joke that a 14-year-old makes. They don't realize the weight of their words. That's the, "I got bumped in the hall, and I told someone I'm going to come after them after school because I'm upset." Those are the type of things that you don't see that a real threat exists, but you still need to do some type of evaluation to determine if it's significant or not. And then the second really looks at, is it serious or very serious? And that's when we start talking about a deeper evaluation process, and we start to look at putting in systems in place to protect the students. And so the evaluation piece, we're going to determine what type of threat it is. We're going to conduct lots of interviews. You see that with our buildings every day, our administrators, our counselors do lots of interviews for things that happen. We're going to look at the context the threat was made in. So was it in a situation where anger occurred? We're going to conduct a mental health screening with our counselors, and we're going to involve law enforcement. And we're all talking to make a decision about where do we need to take this next. And then the next, looking at the plan, what are we going to do? In some cases, it could be pulling those two students together, because if they are upset and they are angry, and we let that anger sit there, there's a potential for something happening later on in the day, later that weekend. And so how do we bring the students together and do some type of, have an apology, restorative conversation? Just get them in a better place so that we don't have an act of violence? We have a duty to protect and notify, and this was something, I think, for all of us that went through the training, that we didn't realize, and there were some different conversations, different opinions. But in the end, what this really showed us is if someone's making a threat against Dr. Rumpus, Dr. Rumpus deserves to know. The whole protection piece about, well, we can't let others know because it's a student, you know, privacy rights. At the end of the day, with this assessment, it was clear that we have a duty to protect students, and we have a duty to notify potential victims. So that was something that came out, and we had a long discussion about the legal aspects. And the nice thing about the training is they've already done that work for us and helped us understand how it doesn't conflict with our privacy laws. Discipline, if discipline's necessary, does something need to be carried out? A safety plan, if we do have, if a student after the interview says, no, I'm still going to beat up Dr. Rumpus after school because this has been too much for me. Okay, then maybe we need to talk about a safety plan, because we can't allow that student to be in harm's way. So how do we interview? And then ongoing monitoring, just because we had the conversation, just because we issued the discipline, doesn't mean everything stops. We need to make sure that we're following up with that student. For most of the things that occur, and these things happen in schools every day, they're small, and we can deal with them kind of at that upper level through the restorative process, through apology, through minor discipline. But it's good to know we've got processes that can go much deeper now when we see things that could escalate. This is something from the U.S. Secret Service. When conducted properly, a threat assessment will involve providing robust interventions and support for students experiencing distress, thereby intervening with de-escalating situations before they become violent. It should be noted clearly in any school threat assessment policy that the primary objective of a student threat assessment is not to administer discipline or to introduce students into the criminal justice system. So the idea here is we really want to help students to understand that the potential for violence isn't the path. We want to give them the supports and the treatment they need so that we don't have harm that occurs in our schools. Our next steps, we trained at minimum one team, mental health providers, administrators, our SROs in every building, along with district staff and others to support them. Our goal is to continue to build on that training each year, to make sure that new folks that come into the system are trained, and to eventually get everyone in those groups trained under this model. We want to make sure that we have some alignment that happens across our buildings, the high schools, middle schools, the elementarys. Everyone understands what the process looks like, the forms look like, where they go. And so we're starting to meet with groups now to start just those nuts and bolts pieces about, well, where do we put the forms once we've created one? How do we create a flag so that if a student may have threatened the eighth grade, that the administrators, when the student gets a little bit older, know that there might have been an incident in the past that they had to do some type of evaluation or provide support for? And then we want to figure out ways to embed it just in our tier ones. And then we want to figure out ways to embed it just in our tier ones. So that's every student's systems to make sure that, you know, people know that we have a process for this. If you hear something, you need to tell us so that we can, we can act and support the student. That it isn't a punitive system, it's a preventative system. Any questions from anyone?
I have one.
All right.
Under the training where you're talking about continuing to build strong teams, is that, are we looking at buildings across the district in all schools? Or are we just looking at like the middle school, high school level? So right now, do we have, you said there is a team in each, is there a team in each building?
Every building. Even our early childhood centers had a team that attended, their principals and their ESCs. There is a, there's a, an adult component. We're, we're not as worried about our four and five-year-olds, but there is an adult component in this. We wanted to make sure they were exposed to it.
Okay, so it is, it's across the board? It's, it's not one level that you're more concerned about than others?
No, no.
Okay. I love that, thank you.
And the, and the training that, that, when we went through it, one of the things that they talked about is you see this upper elementary through middle school kind of surge of kids making these kind of, these big threats. And then as kids get a little older into, you know, their sophomore year and above, you start to see it kind of taper off. And so that's, that's, you really want to make sure everyone is, is involved because it could affect any of the buildings. Is that good?
I think we're good. Thank you, Dr. Reddick.
Thank you. Picture later.
Next, we have patron comments. During patron comments, residents of the district and staff members are invited to address the Board of Education on issues related to the school district. Speakers are called forward in the order of sign-up, and each speaker has three minutes to make their remarks. Please remember that only one speaker is allowed at the podium at a time, and combining time or giving your time to someone else is disallowed. The Board appreciates that you've taken the time to come this evening, and we value both your input and perspective. I would like to remind everyone that we expect that speakers will remain civil and respectful giving, in giving remarks. If anyone fails to comply with Board policies, regulations, and rules, we reserve the right to cut those three minutes short. For your convenience, our three-minute clock is ready.
This is on? Good, because I've heard it go on and off. My name is Grayson Joestens. My pronouns is he and she. I'm alumni of Francis Howell, class of 2013. I want to welcome our new board members, even though I didn't vote for you, and some of you emailed back with my questions. It is time to put aside personal egos and agendas and take time to listen and learn from other board members. Plus, you have different communities here in Francis Howell that you got to listen and talk to after the meetings, both in person and emails. A few weeks ago, Mr. Bertrand posted a proposal of an anti-transgender policy, which is a copy and paste of the 2016 Missouri Consulant of Education. My question to Mr. Bertrand is, have you ever talked to a trans or non-binary student or a parent of one? If not, you need to talk to them, whether you like it or not. Our state government, government is passing or introducing bills that stop gender-affirming care, trans girls in sports, and banning all, all fundings to all public libraries on a book that people like the GQP and Moms for Liberty hate so much that the Missouri state government are wasting taxpayers' money on things like the ones I mentioned. It's time to move on to more important things besides those. Schools are a place to be them, where students be themselves and learn different opinions and topics, not forcing them to be something that they're not. This board should support all of our trans and non-binary students and, and support for them for who they are, and also let them read. It's my world, and I want to have a little pride in my world, and it's not a place I have to hide in. Life's not worth a damn till you can say, "Hey, world, I am what I am." Jerry Herman, thank you.
Next, we have Emily Glantwitz.
Good evening, board members. My name is Emily. I'm the mother of an eighth-grade student at Hollenbeck Middle School. I am here tonight to ask for your help and support in creating a happier, friendlier, and more joyful school experience for our kids. While statistics might show that Francis Howell School District exceeds in providing education to its residents, I ask you to dive in and look at the narrative behind the numbers. What is the student experience really like? In the past three years, middle school has been very daunting and disappointing for my child. There have been few moments, or as author Brene Brown says, "Moments of collective joy to bring the students closer together," and it shows. There is an ongoing problem with vapes and marijuana and very low morale, especially at Hollenbeck, in my opinion. Kids do not know how to make and maintain genuine and caring friendships, and quite frankly, they really do not get the chance to do that at school. We are screaming at them to be kind. We pay them to be kind during the Despicable, Brays, Crays fundraiser, where we pay them to be kind so that they can earn money for the school and then watch administrators complete humiliating tasks as a reward. Unlike so many who have graduated from Francis Howell, my daughter's class did not get to complete the DARE program, having not gone on a field trip to Jefferson City or Springfield, no sixth-grade transition day, not one field trip or school dance throughout their entire middle school career. There are no school-sponsored sports in middle school, and because no moments of joy are provided to them during their school day, including the wasted 40 minutes of hock hour every day for character education, they relentlessly pick on each other, bring each other down, cheat on their schoolwork, and some are resorting to drugs at such an early age. Between hock hour and early release days, kids are wasting about two weeks of their school year when we could be giving them free time to socialize and cultivate friendships naturally. I was hopeful for a different experience in eighth grade when a new principal was brought to Hollenbeck. She said it was her job to bring the fun and told me to look for ways to help. I looked all year long and did not see any solicitations except an invitation to join the PTO. Since then, there have been a sixth-grade dance, a seventh-grade dance, sixth graders get privileges, seventh-grade gets privileges. The eighth-grade students at other Francis Howell schools get graduation ceremonies, trip to Six Flags school dances. Why, why do those kids get to have a fun and supportive school experience but not at Hollenbeck? I appreciate that they will have an eighth-grade party during the next, during the school day next month, but I am disappointed at all the, the chances that were lost. I ask you tonight to please survey the parents and find out what the Francis Howell School District experience is really like for their kids. I have one kid at North who's about ready to drop out.
Thank you, your time is up.
Next up, we have Kirsty Mullins.
Hi, board. Thank you for having me up here tonight. My name is Kirsty Mullins. I've been a teacher in this district for the last 10 years. And nine years ago, I found my forever school at Henderson. I didn't love Henderson for its looks because, to be honest, there's room for improvement. I didn't love Henderson because it offers bright, spacious classrooms because it's also lacking there. But I did love Henderson because of the people, families, and community that rally around and fills the classrooms every day. I love Henderson so much that I bought my house in the border or boundary at the height of the market because I want to ensure that my own children can stay in Francis Howell schools, even if it does mean my daughter does speech in what was supposed to be a storage closet. Another reason I love Henderson is our administration is top-notch and willing to hear my concerns as a parent, which this year there have been many, all related to safety of our campus. As a parent and teacher, I'm very concerned about the safety at Henderson for many reasons. The reason I'll be speaking about tonight is the lack of an SRO and lack of a safety vestibule. There are three buildings in this district that do not offer those safety measures, and we are one of them. I'm aware that on the agenda tonight is the approval of starting plans for vestibules at both Henderson and Fairmount. I hope that actionable steps will be taken to install these vestibules as soon as possible because as far as I'm concerned, we are already a year or two late in taking this measure. Our school backs up to a park, neighboring homes with no fences, and a high school campus which is undergoing construction, and has many, many people on our campus. I walked down to the boundary between Laurel Park and Henderson and was pleased to see that posts have been set for a fence and, to make the line between Laurel and Henderson clear. It is my understanding this fence will not go around the rest of the property between the neighboring yards and our playground and the grassy areas where children play. But hopefully, it will keep strangers from Laurel off of our property. I'm surprised that it took this long after several encounters with people being on property during school hours, one even engaging in conversation with children before being asked to leave. I know this because a letter came out to make parents aware of the situation. I appreciate the transparency of our administration. I'm also aware because I was the teacher who had to approach someone who was clearly not in the right mind, make the walkie call to alert the office, and round up all the kids to keep them safe. This was distressing, to say the least. I know a safety vestibule and an SRO may not keep a tragedy from happening, sorry. However, we should not be playing roulette with the safety of our children based on what zip code their school is located in. Francis Howell should be providing the same safety measures for every student in the district, and that is not our current reality. We should not be touting the installment of vestibules and SROs in schools when not every school has them. Why should my child be subjected to arguably less safe conditions than other students in this district? I would like to know when a safety vestibule will be installed at Henderson and the two other schools who do not currently have them. Thank you for your time.
Next, up next is Caitlin Gulz.
Good evening, board. I would like to welcome all of our new board members to our amazing district, a place that I've called home since 1993. When I graduated high school from FHSD in 2005, I wanted to become a teacher. And on April 1st, 2009, a dream had come true for me. I was absolutely thrilled to accept a job at FHSD. It was truly one of the best days of my life. You see, FHSD is the place that inspired me, the place that grew my love of learning, a place where I always felt safe and never had to worry. And this is the reason why I dreamed of coming home. Here I am now, 14 years later, still living out my dream, teaching kindergarten at Henderson. This dream you see has become even better as my husband and I have fell in love with Henderson so much that we became residents inside of Henderson boundaries. We have a first-grade daughter and three other children who will all get to experience our amazing school family. Henderson is truly home. So, board, I come to you tonight because I want what is best for Henderson. When I turn on the news daily, I hear of mass shootings, intruders, and severe weather that has impacted school around our nation. I can't help but think about how Henderson is lacking in school safety in so many ways. In the Francis Howell School District, we pride ourselves and tell our community that the safety and security of all students and staff is our top priority. But as I'm around Henderson and on school property daily, I don't believe that our actions certainly match our words. Did you know that Henderson is one of three elementary schools in Francis Howell that has not been given a school resource officer? Did you know that because of the construction on FHN, Henderson has not received our safety vestibule? And at this point, we won't have answers on this project, or even if it will happen for us. Since Henderson shares a campus with FHN, we have a security guard who sits in a small guard shack as you enter campus. Although this might give the appearance of making our campus safer, does it truly make our campus more secure if these guards aren't even stopping the cars that are passing by? And let us not forget about the space constraints that we face at Henderson. In March, when St. Charles County was under a tornado warning, over 100 children were stuffed inside the girls' primary restroom. My entire class of 18 students were all inside one handicap stall for an hour and a half. Because we were under a tornado warning, we should have been in duck and cover. But to be honest, duck and cover is not an option where my students are at. There is not enough space. There are too many student bodies in that small restroom to make that happen. This was not just the case in our primary girls' restroom. It was in all of our small classrooms without windows and all of our restrooms throughout our building. Did you know that our cafeteria at Henderson is not in a central location? So when parents enter our building to come and visit and eat lunch with their kids, their entire school has access. Please tell me how this is safe and secure. I cannot and I will not be quiet about this anymore. How can I when lives are at stake? I truly want our district's top priority to be school safety for all students, not those just lucky enough to not live in Henderson boundaries. I won't want both my school babies and my biological babies to have the same guarantees for their safety as our other elementary school students do.
Thank you, your time is up.
Next up is Sherry Kubnik.
Good evening, board. Good evening, people. I'm just a taxpayer. I don't have any children in school and I don't work in school, but I pay the bills. And I have been very upset with what's happened financially. So I went out and tried to do something about it. I was at the election, and a lady, elderly lady, came out the door of the election and then flying off the stairs onto the pavement. Because there's no handrail there, she didn't realize it was a stair. So at the middle school, at Bryant Middle School, I would like to have a railing put up on each side of that one stair that comes out of the auditorium. So then, it's just one stair, it's just one grab bar. If she'd have seen those, she'd have grabbed it. But there's nothing there, and she went down. So I think I, for my money that I pay for school, I want those things corrected. And I'm looking forward to a lot of things improving. And thank you.
Good evening, board and executive cabinet. A preschooler recited her ABCs perfectly for the first time today. A third grader found a new book on the library shelf and spent his whole recess reading it to a friend. A seventh grader remembered PEMDAS and how it used, how to use it on the map practice test today. A junior opened an email from ACT with results that exceeded their expectations and set them on a course for an even brighter future. We do this with them, all of it. The smile, the smile of a bus driver first thing in the morning, the warmth of a decorated classroom and carefully crafted lessons to meet individual needs, the assistance of an encouraging para, the gentle redirection from a principal, the supportive PLC members. We do this for them. Francis Howell leads in so many ways. High academic achievement, supporting victories and sportsmanship compliments, initiatives like PLCs and CAPS, offering virtual and in-person learning through a pandemic, and so much more. We believe in Francis Howell. We believe in its students and teachers and support staff, administrators, and parents. By supporting the experts in every role and providing them with the resources they need, we believe the sky is the limit for each and every child who walks through our doors. And I want to congratulate, to congratulate our new board members. Now the teamwork begins. Our students deserve the best. Help us make that happen.
I'm not good at public speaking. I will be quick. Hi, my name is Scott Ockley. I have been a special education paraprofessional at Francis Howell North High School for the past seven years. I'm also the treasurer for FESPO. We would like to take this opportunity to welcome our new board members, and we look forward to working with you with the whole board to make Francis Howell the best district for students and staff, both inside and outside of the classroom. FESPO would also like to wish our entire student body good luck as they begin EOCs, AP testing, final projects, finals, and map testing. To our teachers and staff, thank you for everything you do day in and day out for our students to help them be successful in making this another great year.
Now we'd like to welcome the State Auditor's Office to come and talk about the audit process.
Good evening. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to introduce ourselves, explain our general audit procedures, and then answer any questions. Representing the State Auditor's Office, we have Kelly Davis. She's the audit director. Steve Ray, the audit in charge. And then I'm Deb Whitis, the audit manager. and then I'm Deb Whitis, the Audit Manager. First of all, I'd like to say that the district will not be billed for the audit cost. There is a sequence of events in our audit process which begins with the entrance conferences. So in addition to this meeting with the Board tonight, we also had an entrance meeting with the Superintendent and Key Personnel on April 10th. We immediately began field work. Field work is where the auditors gather and review documents and records. These are typically like meeting minutes, policies and procedures, and then financial records. Once we get done with field work, then we'll go in, we'll have a pre-exit meeting with the school officials to discuss our initial recommendations prior to our report preparation. This gives the officials the opportunity to provide additional relevant information to the auditors. It also gives the opportunity to understand and ask questions prior to us drafting the report. The next stage is the report preparation. This goes through several levels of internal review. So once we're done with field work and we've had our pre-exit, it's still going to take a little while to get the report drafted. Once it's drafted, we will have a closed meeting with the Board of Education, Superintendent, and then key officials considered necessary to address the findings that we have in the report. This is closed at our discretion to discuss the findings and ensure the accuracy of our report. This is allowed by Sunshine Law, Section 610, 021, Subjects 17 of the Revised Missouri Statutes. This exit meeting is also another opportunity for the relevant officials to provide any additional relevant information. After the exit meeting, there's a response period. This is the period where the Board of Education and officials would be drafting the written responses that will actually go in the audit report. Once we receive the written responses, get them added to the report, the report will be reviewed again and finalized and signed by the State Auditor. At that point, it would be released to the public. All of our audit reports are available on our website. The entire audit process is going to take several months, and there may be some questions once we get done with field work just to make sure that we have everything accurate and correct. So once we're gone, gone out of the field, that doesn't mean we're done. We're still working on it. Our audit period and scope, we will concentrate on fiscal year '23. That's the year ended June 30th, 2023. However, our scope is not limited to that. We will look at other issues if even necessary. Kelly is going to take over for me now.
So the objectives of this audit, this will be a performance audit, so it will differ than your financial statement audit that you receive annually. Our objectives are to review and evaluate internal controls over significant management and financial functions, compliance with certain legal provisions, and the economy and efficiency of certain management practices and procedures. With that, we do review your financial statement audit report, the internal work that the Superintendent has done, and consider that when we're also planning our procedures to prevent any duplication of effort. Our work considers concerns that we've received, but we set the scope of what we will look at. So how we approach that is we do what's called a survey approach. We take a wide and call it shallow approach and learn about the district overall, and then we will focus our field work to those areas that we consider relevant. And then, and then in that process, we do consider the concerns we've received. We have received some concerns already, but we ask both the Board and the administration, staff, the public, if they have any other concerns that they want us to even to consider during the audit process. The sooner we can get those, the better because that will allow us to consider that early in the audit. Due to the confidential nature of our work, once a concern is given to us, we don't discuss it outside of our group. Even if a citizen calls us, we can't then share what work we're doing on that concern. We wouldn't share that beyond it. The only public document for our work and the only public comment will be on the, in the public audit report. And that is based on statute. Chapter 29 has several provisions for us to keep our work confidential, including it's a felony for us to share it. So we take it very seriously. And I wanted to share, and I'll say it a couple of times. Our website, auditormo.gov, has an opportunity for anyone to share confidentially through an email form. We don't know who the emailer is. It goes through our Office of Administration. So if anyone wants to share confidential information through that process, they can remain anonymous. We also have a hotline that is on that website and an email address that's available for anyone who wants to share information. At that point, questions from the Board?
I have a question. Will it just be the three of you? Or is there another bunch of people on staff that are going to be helping you along with this?
So Steve is on site already, and there's two more staff people right now. It is probably a third. Since you're a quite a large district, we want to try to be as efficient as possible. And so we put as many people to get it done as quickly as possible on it.
Yeah, also, Matt. Oh, green means on. Now I lost my train of thought. You mentioned it would take many months, but I mean, are we talking three or 12 or in between?
It's hard to say specifically.
Yeah, just to guess.
Yeah. What I can say is other districts of similar size have taken approximately a year for the full process to go through. You know, our field work will only be a few months onsite. I'm sure it's a relief of everybody over here. We will, the report process and then the review process takes a while. And we will keep the Board and the administration informed of our progress throughout.
Just to reiterate, so any employee or citizen of the district that has a concern that they'd like to make you aware of, they can raise that at the Auditor's website or...
Exactly. Auditor's website. There's an email address on that website and a phone number if they want to call, so.
And that would be anonymous if they so choose?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Any other questions, Board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have our progress update.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone. I'm Ed Frank with SM Wilson, and Maggie Farrell will be speaking in a few minutes. I'm going to give a construction update on the Francis Howell North High School project. And then Maggie's going to talk a little bit about our student and community engagement. Here's some few details of what we're working on. Construction's going great. We're averaging about 150 to 175 guys onsite every day working on the school. Everything's tracking on schedule. It's just going really well. I know a lot of you have been watching it over the period of time. You're going to start seeing a lot more exterior work happening. We're kind of moving into that phase. A lot of exterior windows are going in, brick veneer. We're getting ready to wrap up. There's a lot of site work going on as far as concrete, curbs, things like that. You've seen a start work on the track and stadium area, which I'm sure everybody's excited about. So as this says, a lot of window installation. We're also interior to the building. We're installing casework, marker boards, getting ready to start installing flooring, ceiling grid, things like that. So kind of a phased construction. So we started on the south side of the project, which is really becoming pretty complete. And on the north side of the project, we're working on getting that. This is a drone photo of current progress. This photo is a few weeks old at this point, but you can see the oval area where the new track and field is being worked on, is going to be placed. The building, you can see all the black roof areas, and then there's some that's gray. The black is actually on the roof that has roof membrane on it. Our roofers onsite within a few weeks, the entire building will be on the roof, which is a pretty big achievement at that point. On the south side, it's a little hard to see, but in that U-shaped area, you can see some concrete paving. And you can't really see the curbs, but those roads on the south side, let's have all the concrete curves in place. And also just south of this picture, the new tennis courts are going in. That area is all graded. They're going to start concrete work here in about a week on the tennis courts, so pretty exciting. We've got a few photos of the inside of the building. So this looks kind of boring, but the significance of it is it's the last elevated concrete slab to install in our building. This is in the auditorium. It's on the second floor. And this was the last one, so kind of an exciting milestone to get to. This is more on the south side of the project. Like I said, we're kind of getting to some finish stages down there. So we've got casework installed, ceiling grid. This is in the arts wing of the building, and we'll be starting flooring pretty soon. We've got final coats of paint on the wall. Doors are coming. We have the frames installed, of course, but the doors will start being installed. So it's going to be looking pretty finished on the south side. This is the east elevation of the building. These large bump outs you see are the stairwells, and this is the glass we call the curtain wall. It's kind of a big glass system that's installed. So we're working on getting that entire end enclosed. The smaller window areas are temporary right now. They're temporary enclosures. Our glaze is on start. We'll onsite, starting to put those windows in, and they go pretty fast, so. This is the west elevation. So here's a finished curtain wall system and other stairwell, and also some concrete paving in that area that you can see the brick. And ground face block is installed, washed. It looks really nice. This is what would be the main entrance to the building. We showed this picture. This is a large CO canopy that's going to be installed now. This was just starting to be installed. We had a few columns up. At this point, the whole structure is almost in place. Next Monday, they're going to finish the last little section. And it's a pretty large structure that's really great. It's about the students thinking, oh, it's raining, you know, etc. It's just, it's pretty dramatic. It looks really cool. This is our dashboard that we tend to show each month. We have one allowance left in the project, escalation allowance. These numbers have been inconsistent for several months. They really haven't muted at all. And the one on the right side is the total project and the percentage built. Right now, we're at about 61% built, which is appropriate for the stage of work that's been completed. And Maggie?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Maggie Farrell. I'm the Diversity and HR Manager with SM Wilson. I've been working with the Francis Howell team to implement a culture of care on our job site and also coordinate the skilled program with your students. SM Wilson is committed to prioritizing a safe, welcoming, and inclusive work environment that's free from harassment, hazing, and bullying, utilizing resources through the Associated General Contractors AGC of America. We have created a customized plan to provide regular toolbox talks to our trade partners and have also posted several safety stand downs to Recognize Mental Health Awareness Month, Suicide Prevention Month, and also Construction Inclusion Week. Through our skilled program, which is our construction career education program, we provide hands-on academic learning opportunities to focus on future employment in the architecture, engineering, and construction industries. Our mission is to inspire the future of construction. Through our three-pronged program, we're supporting individuals at all levels from pre-K to workforce professionals to discover, develop, and elevate their skills. We know that increasing awareness and exposure to construction careers will help us build a more diverse talent pipeline and also address the skilled workforce shortages in our industry. Over the past year or so, we've implemented several skilled programs, including multiple sessions of Build and Tell for Henderson Elementary, the installation of two skilled art beams, project tours for staff and students, as well as our summer shadowing program. Build and Tell provided opportunities for Henderson students to have a close-up view of the construction site while also visiting the job site trailer, learning more about construction equipment and technology, and also careers in the industry. The art beams were installed back in July of 2022. There is one with handprints that has the first, students for the first graduating class in the new high school. And the other beam has handprints from Hackman Early Childhood Center students that will be the first students starting in and then graduating from the new building. And in summer of 2022, we hosted our first summer shadowing program, which provided a unique experience for two students from the district to learn more about the construction process and also career opportunities in our industry. We're currently accepting applications for the 2023 summer shadowing program. So again, we'll be selecting two students from the district to spend about 40 hours with the SM Wilson project team over June and July. And during that time, they'll regularly tour the job site. They'll connect with skilled craftspeople onsite, learn about other careers in architecture, engineering, and construction, and experience innovative technology that we are using onsite and in the industry. And then upon completing the program, they'll receive a $1,000 grant from SM Wilson for their continued studies. And students do have to meet certain eligibility requirements, which are listed on the screen as well as on the application. It can be accessed by the QR code on the screen as well. And we are asking for folks to apply by May 12. Also tomorrow, the team at Francis Howell North is going to be providing a tour for pre-engineering students from the high school. So be sure to check out our social media next week, and we'll share some updates from that tour. And then finally, we're looking forward to participating in Build My Future next week at the Family Arena, seeing students and community members there along with many others from throughout the industry, giving the students an opportunity to participate in a very interactive showcase, to introduce them to a variety of careers, provide some additional exposure. And the event is also open to the public from 3:00 to 5:00 on Wednesday, April 26, which is a great opportunity for folks to come out and learn more about skilled trades careers. We really appreciate the opportunity to share with you and coordinating with the district to go beyond the build with students. Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie. That was great. I would like to say, we're the board members. We look forward to working with you. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Like any questions?
Sounds good. So, thank you.
Dr. Roberts, if you can get to him.
You know, Board, there are a couple other points that I'd like to speak to related to the next steps with PropS as part of the report tonight. Even while the audit is underway, which we know PropS is one part of what the team will be looking at from the state, we do believe it's important to move forward with next steps in the prioritization of the remaining projects as we know that a lot of our community members and staff have had questions about what those next steps are, as well as the Board. You'll see tonight that there are two recommendations later in the agenda that are related to PropS work. One is to move forward with getting design estimates for the vestibules at the two elementary schools in the district that do not have the safety vestibules, as well as potentially the three early childhood centers. The second one is for engineering work related to the bleachers at Francis Howell High School. Those projects were all connected to the PropS work. And while we have not done the full prioritization of everything remaining, given the safety and security nature of those projects, we do want to ask the Board tonight to move forward with that design work so that those projects can continue. We plan to provide the Board with a recommendation for the remaining PropS work by the June business meeting at the latest. I'll work with President Bertrand to determine whether that is done through a work session with the Board in May or June, or if we bring that as a report at one of our upcoming meetings. We plan to convene an updated facilities committee within the next month. You know that we've gathered a significant amount of data, surveys. We did our PropS roundtable to start this year, where we got additional feedback from our community. We also had a thought exchange last year where we collected data. And so we believe we have plenty of feedback around input on how to prioritize the remaining work. We want to bring that group together and to look at that information to come up with a recommendation to share with the Board. And we will have our new facilities director involved in that meeting when we meet within the next month. We're also wanting to begin work on the old administration building at 4545 Central School Road to prepare for moving the transportation out of the trailers on that campus and into the building. That was part of the plan when we moved administration over to this building when we brought Union High School over here. While that project is part of PropS, we believe that we are able to fund those internal renovations in that building that need to be done through our capital budget this year. renovations in that building that need to be done through our capital budget this year, and we do not need to use Prop S funds for the initial work inside that building, which is some flooring work, painting work, and some walls and electricity types of things. Connected to that, though, the fuel island and fuel tank at that site where we provide gas for our buses is becoming a safety hazard. The tank itself is no longer repairable. We can't get parts for it that we need. And so when we look at that and the possibility of building a new fuel island there, we begin having to look at the engineering of the entire site. You know, you can't think about just replacing the fuel tank and that structure without considering what we want to do on that site overall with transportation. And that also brings up the discussion of moving our buses from the Howell High School annex location over to there at 4545 to have transportation on one campus. And so that part of the decision, though, will be looked at with our other projects that we have remaining on the list and will be part of the recommendation that we bring forward to you in June. But the work on the building that we'll be bringing to you is purchased is over 7,500, because as I said, that's work that our team will most likely be doing, and we'll be doing it out of our capital budget. So just wanted to, I know there's been questions about that since we shared our Prop S review on what the next steps would be, so we'll be working on that. And like I said, latest at the June business meeting to engage with the board about what those next steps are and get your approval for moving forward.
Maggie Dr. Rumpus. Next, we have Dr. Hock to talk about projected tax liability.
Each year, it. There we go. Each year in April, we have to complete the projected tax liability notice and return that to the county, which is put on file and shared as an anticipation of where we may be as a district come this fall. That is based on preliminary notification of our assessed valuation, and we use that to take a look at where we might be with our tax rate come fall. There could be some changes that might take place between now and then, but this is a good indication of where we're headed. When you take a look at this, we are anticipating that there will be some significant increases in assessed valuation this coming year, which will result in us needing to roll back our tax levy due to caps associated with that increased assessed valuation. So when you take a look at the report that we're turning in, you will see that there is a decrease in our levy from prior years that we will, that's where we think we're going to end up come September.
Any questions, Board? A Board, I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda for April 20th, 2023 as presented. So I'll move. Good. Dr. Ponder? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Board, I would like a motion to approve the March monthly financial report as presented. Some of them. Good. Ponder?
No, I do not have any comments.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Board, I would like a motion to approve the 2022-2023 revised budget as presented.
Some vote.
Dr. Rumpus, Dr. Hock?
In February, the board had asked that we bring a budget amendment be presented during April, which is out of our typical timeframe for a budget amendment, and just to share with you where we're thinking our ending fund balance will be by the end of the year. As a reminder, the preliminary budget for the current year was set and approved by the board in June of 2022, and a budget must be approved prior to the start of each new school year by July 1st. Estimates are created based upon historical data and other known factors. For example, assessed valuation data is received in August, and the tax levy is not set until September. So board meetings and those factors provided the anticipated local tax revenue for that year. That is the type of thing that you can expect to see as a budget amendment to the revenue throughout the year. A primary budget amendment was provided in January, and we're providing this amendment tonight, and will likely be providing another amendment in May or June, as is our typical practice. Throughout the year, budget amendments and transfers are provided to align projections to new information. And as always, the estimated resulting ending fund balance percentage is contingent on all revenue budgets being received and all expenditure budgets being spent. This chart replicates the information provided in the report and represents a total revenue increase for all funds of $3.9 million and provides known primary changes to revenues in the current year. Additionally, certain ESER and ARP grants have been included to modify these allocations. Likewise, this chart shows the categories of expenditures and represents a total expenditure increase for all funds of $6.3 million and provides known primary changes to expenditures in the current year. Again, certain ESER and ARP grants have been included to modify these allocations. The revenue changes by primary object type include an increase in local revenue of $6.7 million, a decrease in state revenue of $41,000, and a decrease in federal revenue of $2.6 million. The revenue changes are based on new calculation factors for funds impacted by student attendance and adjustments based on actual receipts from other primary changes. This is an excerpt of the Missouri State Statute 163.021, referred to as the pandemic provision. This statute has provided districts with the ability to rely upon student attendance data from the 2019-20 school year and certain revenue formula calculations. FY '20 is the year prior to the negative impacts on attendance the pandemic caused. Statewide attendance has declined since the impact of the pandemic. The provision has protected the revenue base supporting public education for a majority of the districts in the state. This provision will impact the district this year and will continue to have an impact next year. This statute was put in place in the 1960s, and as public schools, we are very thankful for this, because as enrollment drops, attendance drops, and the formulas are all negatively impacted because they're tied to attendance. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has communicated that the pandemic provision will be in place for only one more year. Typically, the formula calculation allows districts to rely upon the highest average daily attendance data for the current year estimate or the actual experience in the previous two years. This provision allows us to reach back to the third preceding year for the formula calculation to 1920. Next year, the pandemic provision will only protect us in the area of basic formula. The classroom trust fund and Proposition C calculations will return to the normal attendance year option, so we'll see decreases in funding at that time. This slide restates the information included within the report to show the comprehensive impact on these revenues if the pandemic provision were not in place this current year. As noted, the reduction for Prop C would have been an estimated $611,000. The reduction for basic formula would have been an estimated $2.5 million, and the reduction for classroom trust fund would have been an estimated $235,000, for a total of $3.3 million extra dollars that we have in our budget this year that we would not have were it not for the pandemic provision. ESER III funds will be drawn down during both the FY '23 and FY '24 year. The allocation total is $8.7 million, and amendments may be made to the budget with DESI regarding the purpose of these funds through April 30th, 2024. This amendment provides for a reduction of $4.5 million in revenue, and later we will reference the expenditure reduction.
Board, I want to take a moment on that slide and explain why we're recommending reducing the ESER drawdown by $4.5 million this year when we had previously shared that we anticipated drawing all remaining funds this school year. As we've worked on our early budget projections for next year, as Dr. Hock shared, there's an understanding and expectation that some of our revenue sources will begin to go down. We've also committed to salary increases for next year for all of our employees. So when we look at that, we know that we need to bring to you as close to possible as a balanced budget when we recommend the fiscal year '24 budget. And even with a healthier fund balance, we are concerned, based on the early projections, that we would bring in a deficit budget. So by holding on part of the drawdown until next year, we will be able to pull those down after July 1, show them its revenue next year, which will get us hopefully closer to or minimize the need for a deficit budget when we make that recommendation to you during May and June.
You'll note that within the report and on the summary chart, a reduction is included for local tax in the amount of $378,000, and an increase is included for Proposition C sales tax in the amount of $401,000. Other primary changes are included relative to actual revenues received to date or provided through allocation awards. Medicaid and intangible tax, we also reference that here as FIT tax, have been adjusted based on actuals received to date. The FIT tax was received right after the last budget amendment, and these are numbers that we do not know in advance and must amend based on the actuals that we receive each spring. That FIT tax is a very hard-to-determine number. When you look at it historically, it's kind of all over the place. Earnings from deposits have changed significantly due to increased interest rates. Estimates were determined in consultation with MoCap, PMA Securities, our investment services provider. Prop C, basic formula, transportation, and classroom trust funds were adjusted based on weighted ADA, which is a combination of the average daily attendance. The waitings are provided for free and reduced lunch, students with individual education plans, and students with limited English proficiency. Additional information regarding calculations can be found in the report, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education provides a tool for calculating these revenues that we use to come up with the projections. ARP and ESER I and II revenues were adjusted to reflect actuals anticipated through the end of the year. Regarding ESER III, the majority of these funds are allocated in the general fund, and reimbursement is provided after funds are spent. As we continue the development of the FY '24 budget, we will assert the best use of these funds. The expenditure changes by primary object type include an increase in salaries of $603,000 relative to the ESER and ARP grants. An increase for benefits of $2.37 million is relative to the June 2023 retirement payment crossing into fiscal year '24, when we made the change permanent accrual to cash basis of accounting. A decrease to purchase services in the amount of $3 million was due to an ESER III modification, and a decrease to supplies totaling $625,000. An increase for capital projects totaled $7 million, and it's made up of an increase for bond fund expenditures of $8.5 million and a decrease of regular capital projects expenditures of $1.5 million. As noted within the report, an effort was made to identify funds that will likely not be expended in the current fiscal year, primarily due to positions not being filled. While the decrease in expenditures will impact the ending fund balance and fund balance percentages, the expenditures will be restated in FY '24 with the anticipation of filling those positions. The temporary increase in fund balance that you're seeing cannot be considered new funding for reoccurring costs. A review of salary budget allocations shows likely unspent salary budgets of $4.18 million, primarily due to non-filled positions in the current year. At this time, a change to the budget allocation is not recommended due to the complexities of reestablishing the allocation coding in anticipation of filling those positions in future years. A review of the capital projects budget was conducted, and the recommendation at this time includes a reduction of the regular capital budget in the amount of $1.5 million and an increase of the bond expenditure budget of $8 million. Prioritized capital projects often cross the fiscal years, and this means that budgets must follow the need. A variety of circumstances, including the availability of materials, weather conditions, sequencing challenges, and access to space, affect the drawdown schedule. Both the regular capital project fund and the bond fund will be monitored each month to determine the final budget required and if a subsequent amendment is warranted.
Board, you'll recall that during the February 9th meeting this year, a motion was approved that indicated that the operating fund balance percentage reported in the January 1923 budget amendment of 20.06% increased by 1% or more, that the district would offer to reopen negotiations with FHEA, our teacher association. This chart shows the 20.06% operating fund balance percentage that was shared during that January meeting. As a reminder, our fund balance percentage is our ending operating fund balance, less any restricted funds that we may have, divided by our operating expenditures for the school As noted in the report and shared this evening, absent considering the unused salary budget due to unfilled positions, the fund balance percentage is estimated at 19.77%, which is a decrease of 0.29% at this time. Based on the motion in February, the trigger to offer to reopen negotiations is not met under this calculation. What we do want to point out, though, is that considering the approximately $4.18 million of unspent salary budgets, the fund balance percentage may increase to 22% when we recapture those funds. Again, all estimates assume that all revenues budgeted are received and that all expenditures budgeted are spent. We anticipate that by the end of the year, we will actually exceed even the 22% due to budgets not typically being fully spent, but it's important to remember that any funds remaining in the fund balance at the end of the year don't show up as revenue the following year. They're just simply in what I might call the district savings account as we move forward. This budget was developed last fiscal year, as we're doing right now in May and June to prepare for next year, and it's important to remember that the amendments are done throughout the year based on the actual experience we have year-to-date or trend data that might change throughout the school year. So as we think about our next steps, I do want to speak just a little bit more to the motion to reopen the negotiations if the 1% increase in ending fund balance was realized. As amended, the revised budget does not trigger the 1% increase in fund balance, as we've already shared. When the amendment was presented in January, it included drawing down all of the remaining ESER fund balance during this fiscal year. And as I shared earlier, based on the early projections for next school year's budget, we've made the decision to only draw down half of the remaining ESER funds this year. We understand the perception out there. We don't want our teachers or any other staff or anyone else thinking that that decision was made to avoid hitting that 1% threshold. As I shared previously, the decision is made on having that to draw down and show as revenue next year to help have closer to a balanced budget next school year. It really wasn't about this 1% trigger. As I shared, we do fully anticipate reaching the 1% through a variety of recaptures as we get closer to the end of the school year. The reality is, when we enter into negotiations, it's with the expectation of good faith on both sides. And when we negotiated with FHEA earlier this year, we reached a tentative agreement that was ultimately ratified by our teachers and approved by the Board of Education. Our overall financial forecast has not significantly changed since that time, and with potential insurance impacts as we look toward next year, we remain concerned about the impact that any additional salary would cause on our budget as we move forward. We don't believe that we are in a position to increase salaries any more than we already have, and to reopen negotiations, we believe would provide a false sense of hope to all of our teachers that we're in a position to do better than we already have. And negotiations are tense and stressful, even in a best-case scenario, and so we believe that it's in our best interest not to reopen them, because we don't believe that we're in a position right now to offer more for next school year. We've worked really hard this year to be transparent with all of our stakeholders, especially our associations, when we talk about our financial situation, and we're committed to continuing to do that. And we want to engage and work with them, as well as our board and with our community, about our financial situation. And while we have not met the threshold to reopen the negotiations, we do want to continue to work with our associations. We're happy next month during our chiefs meeting to have an in-depth conversation around the budget this year as we end, as well as the development of next year's budget, and to involve them in that process so they understand where we're at with these recommendations. As Dr. Hock shared, we're currently in the process of reviewing. All of our departments and schools have submitted their initial budget requests for next year, so we're working on bringing all that data together so that in May, at our business meeting, we can bring and do a budget workshop to talk about the first draft of the budget for fiscal year '24 and to get the board's feedback so that we're on track for approval during our June meeting. At that time, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question. Since the negotiations are not going to be reopened, I know that you said you would have a meeting with the chiefs, but how is this information going to be rolled out to the general populace of teachers? Is there something that's going to be done as kind of an information, soften-the-blow type of information?
Absolutely. We can, I've tried to be better this year, as we've had different information come out to share that through email with our teachers at large. Actually, just before this meeting, part of FHEA was having a meeting. I was able to stop and just talk with them briefly as a group to share it. I'm in the process of getting out to different buildings and talking with staffs, and it's just sharing information about our budget and trying to be transparent about it, and we're happy to engage with them. Again, it's just being open about how we reach these decisions, so nobody thinks that things were done. things were done intentionally.
Other questions, board? I do have a question, Dr. Rumpus or Dr. Hawke. You mentioned that we forecast the budget based on forecast expenses, forecast revenue. Are we forecasting pay raises in that forecast for prior year?
With the projections that I did earlier and I brought to you in January, that did include a 2% increase annually projected forward, and it also included increased costs for things such as utilities or insurance costs, et cetera. Based on our enrollment, the projections moving forward were relatively flat because that has either been, that has been declining slightly over the past several years. So there aren't any real significant increases in revenue on the horizon after some of this funding drops off that we have been experiencing with the pandemic provision. We also have a significant increase that's taken place with transportation, both last year and this next year, where we're fully funding transportation, and that's a significant increase for us. We don't know what the long-term plans are for our legislators, if that's something we can count on moving forward. Our long-term projections are very concerning. We're going to have to really make some hard decisions as a district in the future.
I do believe President Bertrand, and part of that question also was just around the salary specifically, and there have been times when we've looked at five-year projections where salary increases were not built in. There was a belief that if they were built into a fiver projection, people assumed they were happening or assumed the number that was in there. We do believe that it's important that we want to value all of the employees in this district and that people should, when they accept a position, hope to have salary increases each year, and so we do want to build in something as we look at five-year projections when we think about the overall budget and changes we might need to make, understanding that by building in those salary increases, potential benefit increases, if we need to make cuts or adjustments in other areas in order to, you know, make sure people have some sort of increase each year, that we can do that. So we do think Dr. Hawke this year thought that was an important change that we make, and we talked about projections to try and always include some level of salary increase so that we could work toward that goal.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Are you able to speak quickly about what kind of changes to insurance we can expect next year, if we have that info yet?
Well, we are anticipating, if you had asked me two weeks ago, I'd have told you it's a 12% increase. People have been more healthy this last month, so now we're down to a 9.68% increase. We're kind of at a point where we have to make that decision if we're going to lock in at the 9.68% increase or hope that people are really healthy next month in hopes that it might go down. So it's kind of a month-by-month where they're trying to determine what the safe number is to project for the year going forward. So it's going to be significant. We've had some conversations with the insurance committee about that. We've shared some plan revision options that could help with increasing savings, and so that's something that we're going to have to really make some hard decisions about as we make our determination for the FY 24 budget.
Our goal is to bring a recommendation for insurance each year in June to bring recommendations for insurance plans the following year. And so working with the insurance committee and getting feedback from others, there are only so many different levers you can pull when you think about the overall increase to insurance. So the district can absorb a certain amount. Some of that is usually passed on to employees in one way, shape, or form, whether that's through premiums or whether that's through plan changes. And so at this point, we're gathering all that information to know what the different options are to work through with the representatives of that committee to make the best decisions for the district. It's also important, though, the sooner we have that number, you know, that's a significant part of the budget as we think about next school year, so needing to work on that information right now.
Dr. Hawke, you were saying between 9 and 12%. What was your placeholder percentage in the budget?
With the budgets that I presented to you in January with the projections, I was using a 6% increase annually. We've been very fortunate and have had low increases over the last several years. This year, it's a very, going to be a significant hit for us.
So it could technically double?
Yes.
Other questions, board? All right. A board voting to accept the approved 22, 23 revised budget as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Board, I would like a motion to approve the security vestibules as a progress project as presented. I'll move. Director Cook, Director Ponder. Board, any discussion?
Do you know if those vestibules are bulletproof?
At this point, we don't have the design for the vestibules. We're really just getting the permission to move forward with bringing you the design and the information back and the cost associated with that. So this is just a request to select a design professional and come up with some pricing for you for those remaining vestibules, or to determine if a vestibule is the best design for each site.
I just want to chime in for a sec. So I think on the previous ones, I think they have like ballistic film on them. So I'm assuming this would probably be at least that.
That, I do believe, I do believe you're correct in that, but I'm not.
I was just, yeah, but if not, maybe say that that's what we want.
Yep.
Other questions, board? Do we have a timeframe?
As soon as, if you approve this, then we'll go out and collect some bids from different, get some estimates from different design professionals, make a determination of who we want to select, if we're going to go with an architect to do that work, if we're going to go with an engineer to do the work due to the scope of the work, and make a, bring that then to you with a recommendation. It will depend on how quickly they can pull that together. The work won't, will not likely be able to take place this summer to get the materials, to get everything together. It would likely take place throughout the school year at some point next year. We discussed, that's why we wanted to bring this to you today, so that we could get things moving as quickly as possible. We know that it will likely be an issue of having to order in materials and supplies, waiting for it to get here, and then making that move to get some of that work done. If we tried to do that over a holiday break or a long weekend where even, I believe in the past, when all of the other security vestibules were put in place, there were periods of time where they were boarded up areas and you had to kind of deal with the construction for a small period of time to get things in place. So we would anticipate that that might take place over the course of the next year.
Since that seems to be taking quite a while, I mean, in my, as far as I'm concerned, is there the opportunity that we could get an SRO there?
I know the SROs are something that have been discussed, and I'll turn to Dr. Rumpus for that.
So the issue that we have in several of our elementary buildings that fall within specific municipalities, that they're not covered by St. Charles County police in the way that some of our other buildings have. And so in the instance of Henderson Elementary, St. Peters, over the summer when this was announced, while they weren't able to provide a full-time SRO for the building, they did commit to having somebody present at the start of the day, at the end of the day, and present, checking in throughout the day, put some other things in place, such as having a spot right in front of the building where whether the SRO or other police officers who are on duty could be there and doing their work and be visible throughout the day. We are pleased that they have upheld that. It seemed like something early on that that might be something they would say they would do and they wouldn't be able to follow through on, but they really have. However, we do understand that that's not the same thing as having a full-time SRO in the building each and every day. We have talked with the municipalities in those situations, and while they're either the size of their department or their budget and not allowed specifically to provide the extra position, or there were concerns that they could even hire somebody. So our safety manager for the district is working on looking at, is there a situation where we could pay more of the cost in order to make that happen in those three buildings? There are also other options related to armed security and other things that we might be able to use that we don't currently, we have security at our high schools. Those are not armed security guards for that service, and so looking at that as an option as well, understanding now that given that seven of our buildings do have it, that wanting to have that at the other three moving forward.
I have a question. So as far as choosing an engineer or the architect, is there a baseline spec that you're looking for, or are you looking for them to provide you with the spec as to what they're going to provide, what their design would include?
Working with our facilities managers and looking at the example that we have done in the other schools, we have an idea of the direction that we would like to head. So it wouldn't be starting from scratch. It would be taking a look at some of the examples that we have used in the past and then building that recommendation based on those individual sites. If I answered that properly for you.
So it sounds like you're going to provide guidelines to somebody to provide you a proposal.
Yes. That's the direction that we're anticipating going because we have a, we have a good idea from the facility side of the house of what we need, and it isn't a huge change. We built several over the last year, and we have a direction that we feel that we need to head.
Is there a possibility somebody looking at and making improvements to what we've done before?
Absolutely.
So that'll, will that be looked at as an alternate from them? Or will that be something you're looking at, all right, this is our general guideline, give us a quote for this, and then give us an alternate for where you see improvements are needed?
Well, I'm guessing we could do that as an alternate. You're kind of speaking outside of my area of expertise, but absolutely, I think we could do that as an alternate and bring that alternate information. If somebody thought there was an improvement that needed to be made on the design that we have in place, absolutely, we would entertain that and have those options to be able to bring to you as possible recommendations.
Any other questions, board? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Board, I would like a motion to approve the Francis Al High School bleacher safety recommendation as presented. I'll move. Cook. Dr. Hawke.
Upon arrival in the district, one of the areas that was brought to my attention by our facilities team was concern regarding the Francis Al High bleachers. This has been an area that has been explored in the past, and I was able to find an engineering report from July of 2020 where they did an evaluation of the bleachers. The bleachers were built in 1968, and we fill them to the brim at a football game. And we just want to make sure that we have structurally strong bleachers and that they are safe. Based on that engineering feedback from SSC Engineering, there were some recommendations to limit seating capacity with the current bleacher design. What we're wanting to do is enter into some exploration with an engineering firm to explore shoring up, strengthening those, the design of the existing bleachers in preparation for the fall football season.
Board, any questions?
Yes, I would like to ask Lana about her thoughts on the Francis Al High School bleachers. Are they right, they're packed to capacity every?
Yeah, so that's one of the proud features of Francis Al High School is our football team. As a student, I regularly attend, and they are jam-packed, shoulder to shoulder for students and parents as well. From a student's standpoint, it's definitely, you know, fun to get up there and be in all of it, but it's definitely been thrown around the school that they are old and they need a little bit of help. So, yeah, that's definitely been something that's brought up before.
Other questions, board?
The proposal is simply for the design, for approval of providing the design of the bleachers, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So the actual improvements to whatever design is needed is going to be a secondary cost coming?
It would be additional costs that we would like, that we would hope that we could get a quick turnaround on and get some information to you very quickly so that that work can be done this summer.
A quick question on that, too, reading through the memo. It looked like maybe our insurance company also commented on, they want to hold off and make sure that we are following the engineering instructions.
Yes, we did have our engineering company come out and take a look at the bleachers and the proposal that we were provided. Basically, we need to either make some improvements or limit that capacity. So if we don't have the improvements that would strengthen shore up those bleachers based on some of that feedback, in the fall, we would anticipate limiting the capacity in that area based on recommendations. So there may be some changes for the fall, either one way or the other.
So I would assume if they're telling us we need to do one or the other, then if we chose not to do either, we would have some kind of liability on our hands.
Absolutely. We will want to make sure that we follow those recommendations and that we provide a safe environment for our students. The other option is tear everything down and build new bleachers. That's something else that you could do, but that's not going to be ready by fall, by this fall. So we need, we need to have a plan for this fall.
Thank you. Any other questions, board?
I got one more. Is this for just the grandstand or for the home and visitor side?
This is for the major grandstand bleachers on the football field.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Board, I would like a motion to approve the purchases over $7,500 as presented. I'll move. Director Stiglitz, Elaine. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Board, I would like a motion to approve entering into a three-year contract with options to renew for a two-year additional year with Care ATC to provide near-site clinic services for the Francis Al School District. I'll move. Director Stiglitz.
Second.
Director Lang. Dr. Hawke?
When I originally learned about the Care ATC clinic, I thought this sounded like a luxury item to have as a district. We have our own clinic. That seems like that might be a waste of money. Maybe we could save money by getting rid of the clinic. You know, when you're looking for, knowing that costs are tight, you know, that was a place that I initially thought might be a direction to go. But the more I've learned about the Care ATC clinic, I've realized that that is actually the polar opposite of what we should be doing. Care ATC is a great resource that we have for our staff. Staff members can go to the clinic and have no cost or low-cost clinic visits, testing, lab work, and free, and free medication that they can pick up onsite at the clinic. Now, that sounds like it would all cost us a lot of extra money, but the reason that it actually saves us money is it is less expensive to have our staff go to the Care ATC clinic, receive medication there, receive treatment there than it is for them to go out into the general population or go to and run those bills through Cigna, our insurance provider, or through CVS Pharmacy. So we actually save money by individuals going to the clinic. Not only does it save money, which, you know, appeals to me as a CFO, but additionally, we have really great outcomes for our staff members who attend. They have great relationships with the providers, and when you take a look at some of the results beyond the fiscal impact, you can see that the members who are engaged and who are participating in some of the chronic care are experiencing very significant results that are better than industry trends in their progress. Individuals who are participating in their personal health assessment, 55% showed an increase in their obesity indicators, 44% high blood pressure indicators were better, and 25% their diabetes indicators, and 45% saw improvements in their cholesterol. I can just speak as an individual who finally got around to getting mine done. I can see why there are those benefits. The doctors call, they follow up with you, you get a telephone visit with the individual. You can choose to have a telephone or an in-person visit to follow up on your results, and I really, I really think that it is a great investment for the district. We partner, we're not the only district in this partnership. We're getting ready to expand, their, Care ATC is getting ready to expand and add special school district. When that goes into place, there will also be some expanded mental health service supports that will be available and some occupational health services that will be available. So they are continually working on helping us improve what we can offer to our staff members. We've also even been in conversation about having the Care ATC clinic go onsite to each of the buildings to help offer those personal health assessments in the morning before school, where you could run through and get the, get your blood work done, get all of that taken care of, and then schedule that follow-up call later on a planned time so you don't have to leave school, you don't have to take a day off work to follow up and try to address some of those issues. We know that if people can catch and take care of their chronic issues early on, not only is it better for them as individuals, it also saves our insurance plan a lot of money. If you can catch something early and fix it, it's, it's much better for you as an individual and also better for our and also better for us on the bottom line.
Dr. Hunt, can you also share with the Board of Education how we're working to work with the Transportation Department to try to see if we can get some of their mandatory drug testing done onsite so that our bus drivers aren't, because it's all ran. Can you just explain that a little bit?
Yep, I'll go into detail about that. With the addition of the occupational health component, we're hoping to be able to, in the near future, be able to take care of those mandatory physicals, drug testing, some of that onsite at the transportation facility so that individuals don't have to leave, take time off work, miss a route to be able to take care of some of those needs. We're in the process of that. We hope that it will be in place by this fall, if not shortly thereafter, which would save us money and save everyone time.
Dr. Hunt, so one more thing. There was a lot of thought that went into this CARE ATC along with partnering with Pattonville and Parkway.
Yes.
And there's multiple locations.
Yes.
So there was a map drawn with teachers from this district, that district, that district, and they strategically placed these places. It also cuts down on teachers having to take off and having to pay subs and stuff like that. So I think the benefits really outweighed anything when we started this.
Yeah, and they have early hours and they have late hours and you can do a telephone visit during a planned time. I think the only problem I see with CARE ATC is that our staff doesn't realize that they have this resource. And we need to do a better job of educating our staff and making sure that they know they have this available. I think it will really, really be a help for them as individuals and also a help for us as a district. And we've had a lot of conversation recently about how we can better educate everyone and give people a taste of what a good experience this can be. We've even talked about, you know, could we have those health assessments be a piece that would be something that we could even require people to have at each building just to give them that chance to interact and to get that initial feedback. There would be a lot of ways we could increase our wellness and they're very interested in partnering with us on those efforts.
So I heard you say something about partnering with special school district too, so that's the first I heard of that. Is that going to be separate or is that going to be part of our?
They will join the consortium group and that will just expand our reach and our footprint. They are going to also add another site closer that direction that other people may be able to tap into and use.
Thank you.
You mentioned drug testing, is that also to include new hire drug testing and things like that?
Primarily, the drug testing is for the Transportation Department, I believe, and Lisa can speak to that correctly, if they're the only group.
The only positions that we drug test for pre-employment are those that are considered safety sensitive, so some of our maintenance employees might be drug tested before they're employed, but that's a small portion of our new hires.
Is this promoted with, outside of district, when hiring teachers, custodians, things like that, as more of a benefit to come to Francis Al or any of the neighboring districts?
It's definitely a recruiting tool for us. We share the great benefits that our district offers, including the clinic. We talk about retirement, we talk about all of the benefits that we provide. Over the course of time, I think sometimes the salary is what's most important when we're out recruiting these days, but we definitely do our best to share the entire compensation package whenever we're recruiting for new positions.
I'm always curious when I see total estimated savings and costs. When you calculated the savings, did you do that through projection or through actual costs?
The savings were based on actual costs. We worked with MMA, Marsh McLennan and Associates, and in partnership with CARE ATC, they look back at those historical savings and were able to, were able to make those recommendations or projections for us.
So CARE ATC is calculating the savings?
CARE ATC in partnership with MMA, it's, when we look at all of the insurance work, we have CARE ATC, Cigna, CVS, and MMA. Each of those groups will share their information on trends, on usage, on costs. MMA verifies, clarifies, and assures that the information that we're getting is accurate with their expertise in the area of the healthcare industry. And so we rely heavily on them to vet that information and make sure that it's accurate.
So nobody in the district has actually verified the savings? It's all been done by outside?
Yes, that has been done by, like MMA are the people that we work with on our healthcare management. They have the expertise in the area, in that area to really be able to dive into this and be able to vet that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
Board, I'd like a motion to approve the 2023-2024 transportation recommendations as presented.
I'll move.
Second. Dr. Lane. Cook. Dr. Rumpus.
Board, we are bringing tonight our recommendation for changes to transportation for the 23-24 school year. I'm going to provide several slides, reminding you of some of the information we've been discussing and the work that we've been doing this year. And I have our Director of Transportation, Ms. Jen Simpson here, who will also be happy to chime in and answer questions as we work through this. Starting with this slide, as we experienced the significant driver shortage earlier this year and the impacts on our Transportation Department, we started having the internal conversations about what we might need to do differently moving forward. You'll remember in January of this year that we changed the start times of our early childhood centers, not because there were issues with their transportation, but in order to alleviate some of the stress on the other tiers of transportation within the district and able to be able to support them. On February 1st, we held the Citizen Roundtable where we shared several different ideas on changes we can make for next year and asked for feedback from our community around both challenges and potential problem solving around different solutions that we could put in place. Following that roundtable, we also posted those videos and asked patrons to complete surveys, sharing feedback similar to what people were able to provide in person that evening. On March 16th, we engaged our principals for the first time and shared the information in detail with them to get their feedback on potential next steps. And all of that culminated in making an initial recommendation to the Board on March 30th, where we shared this information during a work session, waited to receive additional feedback from the Board and from the community, resulting in the recommendation we're bringing to you tonight. Over the year, there have been a significant number of challenges impacting our Transportation Department. As we've shared multiple times, there's a nationwide shortage of bus drivers and that problem has continued to worsen. And really, the end of last school year into this year began to really impact our department here directly. On a day-to-day basis with over 130 routes, our staff are working to cover 30 to 40 vacant routes each day, including open driver positions and then just day-to-day driver absences. That's resulted in just about everyone in Ms. Simpson's department out driving buses if they are licensed to do so, which means that we then have only one or two people in the Transportation Department doing the dispatch and responding to safety calls, concerns from parents, concerns from the buildings, really impacting the ability to have a high level of customer service. When this was created, which I believe was for the February Roundtable, year-to-date, we were up over 82% increase in the number of, and this was measuring the number of calls that had to go out to parents per route, letting them know that buses were running late or early. So a significant impact on our ability to operate the department efficiently this school year. When we have all those absences, it means different drivers each day, which causes buses to be late, it impacts students' interactions with the drivers, when parents and students get to know a driver and count on that person being there each day. That also supports good behavior on the bus, those relationships, all of that has been impacted. We also, as we've shared, we've had to cancel a lot of field trips this year or reduce the numbers. There are certain times of day or certain days we can't provide them. And also had to cut back on the buses we're able to provide, shuttling students to different sporting events or back from sporting events because we simply don't have the staff to provide the service. Outside of just the staffing, we also have had our efficiency rating impacted by this, which is another concern for us. The state uses an efficiency rating to determine how much we're refunded each year of allowable miles. As we talk about the budget, up to 75% of our allowable miles can be reimbursed by the state and this being the first year that was fully funded next year. However, we didn't realize the full funding from the state because our efficiency rating is close to 140%. They look, they give you up to 104% to be considered fully efficient and then beyond that, up to 30%, you're penalized. And so on this year, we lost out on about $3 million that we might have received had we been fully efficient. And looking at our budget situation, that's a significant impact for us. There's a variety of steps that Ms. Simpson and her department had already put in place leading up to this year. That included reducing 23 routes and driver positions since 2019, when Ms. Simpson worked to bring transportation in-house, really focused on how to be as efficient as possible. And when they found opportunities to combine routes or change routes, they've done that and they had eliminated them. I mentioned the changing the start and end times for early childhood earlier this year, and I can't emphasize enough that none of us wanted to make that decision and it had a significant impact on our ability to serve those students and impacted their needs. But that had to be done in order to support transportation throughout the district. And several of the other changes that we've made there that we've shared previously. Based on all that feedback, we adjusted our recommendations and brought forward three recommendations to the Board last year, or excuse me, last month. The first one being implementing a one-mile walk rule, initially for our middle school and high school students only. The second one being consolidating bus stops for all students in neighborhoods. And as part of that recommendation, elementary students would be asked to walk up to a maximum of two tenths of a mile to get to a neighborhood bus stop. And our secondary students, who now would have to live a mile or further to get bus transportation, would be asked to walk up to four tenths of a mile to get to their bus stop. And then the third recommendation is adjusting some of our bell times for next year that would allow us to consolidate routes at several levels. As a reminder, we currently have a three-tier system. The recommendation is to add a fourth tier. And as you see here, what that does is it allows us to combine some of those tier-one and tier-two routes so that we are not doubling up and having routes run through the same neighborhoods twice, but a bus could go through a neighborhood once and pick up high school students and middle school students, then come and drop the first group off at the high school and then drop the other students off at a middle school. We pointed out several times that not every middle school and high school route would be combined in that way, but in certain neighborhoods and at certain distances, it would allow us to do that, being more efficient. And this chart shows, it's a summary of the impacted schools, so our three early childhood centers and six other buildings. You'll see there the changes in start and end time that they would have next year compared to this year. So at the least impacted union, which is here in this building, would have a five-minute start time earlier, 30 minutes, 45 minutes for some of the buildings, just depending on the site and how they fit into those tiers. So the projected impact of these changes that we're recommending would allow us to eliminate at least 15 routes and connected to that, 15 drivers. We've emphasized that this is not a situation where we would be reducing drivers through a reduction in force, that through normal attrition and through the current openings we have, we believe that every driver that we have monitored that wants to continue to work for Francis Al next year would have the option to do so, but would allow us to eliminate that number of routes overall, which we anticipate on a very conservative side, allowing us to save at least $1 million annually in our transportation budget, which is currently just over $14 million that you saw on our previous slide. Reducing this number of routes in addition to the routes that the department has already eliminated, we also have a number of buses that we are looking at being able to sell now. There's a strong used vehicle market and that includes buses. Ms. Simpson's been thoughtful about which buses we might sell now, understanding that we still want a rotation of low-mileage buses in our fleet as the buses that we have get a little bit older. So we're not selling every bus that we have that we're not using, but looking through and working with the leaseholder on getting out of some of those. And that will also add, provide an additional one-time revenue source for us as we sell those buses. And ultimately for us, you know, this really is about the customer service and we understand that getting kids to school on time and having them picked up by a bus driver that they have a positive relationship with is an important way to start each school day. We want them safely to get to school. And unfortunately, the shortage of drivers is impacting our ability to do that and is having a trickle-down effect on operations of not only the department, but ultimately, you know, student academics when we talk about getting them to school on time. In this last slide, there are two points that we've continued to make throughout this. The first is that these are long-term changes. We're not doing these right now with the hope that if we can increase funding mechanism in one way or another, that we would change this next year. We do believe these are the right changes to make, long-term for the district, and so we do see these as being permanent changes. And the second thing is that we will continue to look at our transportation and our efficiency and that there may be additional recommendations that we would make in the future to continue to improve our efficiency and overall customer service of the Transportation Department. At this time, Ms. Simpson will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Board, any questions? I'd like to make a motion to amend the main motion. I amend this to read, motion to approve the 2023 to 2024 transportation recommendations as presented and beginning in the 24-25 school year, provide school bus service to only those K through 12 students that live outside of the one-mile route boundary unless required by individualized education plan for road safety concerns as identified by the FHSD Transportation Department. Do you have a motion, amend the motion? Any second?
A second.
Discussion, Board?
So I just have a question. So we're basically just adding elementary level two what's already in place?
Right, this amendment would address the elementary school students in, not the 23-24 school year, but the following year. So there's, it's my understanding that there's some difficulties with elementary schools with parent pickup, traffic jams and not enough space. So the intention here is to delay that basically by one year, give the administration, the Transportation Department, the Facilities Department some time to come up with some solutions there, be it capital improvements of parking lot or lane changes, logistical efficiencies, schedule changes, what have you, in elementary schools. But to ultimately make this change in the elementary schools permanently, I think we all know it's needed, it's just a matter of when. And as was presented, we have, we lose about $3 million on the efficiency rating right now, if that's right. We, with the changes that are proposed today, will capture some of that, but there's no, I don't think it's, I don't think anybody expects that we're going to get near 104% with the changes that are proposed here and with our, with our finances. I don't think we have the luxury to continue to provide this service, given that we have really one of the lowest, the lowest tax rate in St. Charles County and none of our benchmark districts provide this kind of service. So this is just a long-term, I think, thing that we need to do to be physically responsible with the tax dollars that we're entrusted with.
I just have a question for Jen. During your legwork on all this, have you looked at that with the elementary level?
Definitely, we have, and I appreciate the response that we won't get to 104 with the current recommendation, and I do agree with you on that. I will say that some of the concerns and the reasons why we didn't recommend the one-mile for elementary as well right now, because we did consider that. But that was one of the things we heard a lot of feedback on through our surveys were some of the concerns in doing that at the elementary level. And that really made us do a little bit more of a deep dive into what that would look like. And so just a few of the concerns that I want to make sure we bring to your attention is that even though it will potentially improve the efficiency rate in the Transportation Department, there are definitely some costs involved on the other side of the house. So for example, several of our parking lots will need to undergo some modifications, some pretty significant, that will cost money. And that's not money that's budgeted right now for next year. So we'll have to get in and figure out exactly what that is and know that then we would need to find the money to pay for those parking lot renovations, which could be significant. We also will need to look at striping, getting crosswalks, making sure that our local police departments are engaged in that, in helping with that process. We would need to look at hiring crossing guards. And the other thing we would need to think about is our vacation station programs. Right now, most of our vacation station programs are maxed out and we don't have a long list of people that are applying for those positions either. And so we would definitely have to figure out how we could increase the capacity of our vacation station program and then in turn that would increase some costs there. So there's some trade-off there that it would, it might take a while to recognize exactly what that is. I think the other thing that is a little bit concerning in my mind is that we won't really see the results on our efficiency rating until October of '24, right? Because it's always behind. And so I'm a little concerned as to, you know, in October of '24, would we recognize that really this is significant enough that we feel like it has done the job that we needed to do? needed to do? Or, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't get to recognize that information before we are you implemented the next change, I guess, is my, a little bit of a concern with that. So those are just things that, we can work around all of those things, we can implement them. I just want to make sure they're on your radar as things we're evaluating.
So I just want to make sure I understand. So the recommendation from Dr. Rumpus is just to include the middle school and the high school. What you're, and to revisit this, like Ms. Simpson had just mentioned, maybe in the fall when we have the more efficiency rating, is this working, is it not working? But what I'm hearing you say, what I'm hearing this is we're just going to go ahead and do it, and they've got a whole year to implement to figure it out. Is that kind of what I'm, my understanding? Am I, am I right?
That's, that's a good assessment, right?
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Other comments?
When's the absolute, because I know you need to plan if we're going to implement this either way, whatever happens. What's an absolute drop-dead date for you to be able to know which direction we're going?
I would say even for next year, our principals wish we would have brought this to you a month ago. And that's simply because they want to spend time while staff are still in the buildings, while parents and students are still here to work on the logistical planning. And now they'll have about a month to do that before everyone goes home for the summer. You know, we pride ourselves on drop-off and pickup, you know, being just as important as a lot of the other things we do and making sure these things are in place. When we think about working with some of our community partners, not that we would have the responsibility or the ability to work with every single neighborhood around bus stops, but giving plenty of time to determine where those stops will be, the transportation department will spend months now creating these new routes and developing them, which will then allow us to potentially work with certain neighborhoods around where the stop is, patrons that might have a bus stop near their house. So we, working with our principals and then through the different community groups that we got feedback from, you know, had pages of concerns and problem-solving ideas to work through. And so really for next year, that's why we wanted to make the recommendation tonight. We feel like this is late, and that, you know, this is where we're headed for '24-'25, really having a year to plan ahead on a lot of those other logistical pieces.
Have you gotten feedback from the parents who have the children that are going to be affected as, by having to be at the school 40 minutes earlier?
I will be very honest that we have not received significant feedback. We provided plenty of opportunities. After the work session, we again pushed the video of the meeting out, the live stream recording, asked for additional feedback. And talking to our district leadership team, I'd say fewer than 10 or 15 parents have reached out with concerns. Ms. Simpson has mentioned that she's not received a lot of concerns there. We do recognize and believe that this is one of those changes that until parents get that bus schedule in the mail this summer, until they receive a notice that this is the start and end times next year, it just may not be on their radar. And so Ms. Joel's, our communications chief, has been working already on that communications plan and already working on individual building notifications that can be pushed out through newsletters, through summer enrollment packets. It's going to be an ongoing communication effort to make sure people understand this change is coming. But to answer your question, have we received, you know, significant concerns and negative concerns, we haven't. But we know from last year, even making the changes that having not, buses not go down every cul-de-sac and having some students walk 500 feet between bus stops, again, once parents receive those actual stops, that's when we start getting the calls and the information. So Ms. Simpson's department works to run a phone bank with some retired employees as we get closer to the start of the school year. So as parents have those concerns and questions, they're able to call and hopefully get, you know, communication, get their questions answered as we work through that. And we intend to do that again as we start next school year.
What's, so you looked at it and you didn't do the elementary, you didn't include elementary. There was obviously some sort of cost-benefit analysis done. Was there, was it a plus? Was it a minus? Why, why did we not include elementary? What sort of cost impact are we talking?
When we, when we started hearing the additional feedback and looking at the additional concerns, that's when we felt like there was enough work that we wouldn't be able to logistically get it done for this year anyway. Just, we wouldn't be able to get all those things finished by August. And so really, at that point, we pulled that off the table. And so we didn't do an in-depth cost analysis to say, you know, vacation station staff and parking lot renovations compared to efficiency rating. We haven't done that math, because once we really got into all of that, we realized it was, was going to be bigger than our original thoughts. So that's why we felt like going with the sixth through 12th grade was doable right now. We knew we would recognize savings, and the logistical side of that, we could handle this summer and put in place for the fall, but we didn't proceed any further. That's why we pulled the elementary off of the table.
Okay. So essentially, we're pushing off. You're going to say, you're projecting saving a million dollars this year, but essentially you're pushing off what's going to cost you next year to, to find additional savings by including elementary. Correct. I mean, because that's the long-term, we're in this long term, so the long-term plan is to include elementary, correct?
Well, that decision hadn't been made yet. We were really going to just focus on these changes initially, see what the impact is, and then determine if we felt there was a need for additional changes or not. That was the intent of the current recommendation.
And also, so we're talking one mile, but I know, again, I'm going to rehash some info. We only have to transport for three and a half miles, correct?
Correct.
So we're, we could say one mile now and later make it two miles, three miles, three and a half miles?
The state reimburses any students that are, you know, the formula accounts for students that are transported over one mile. They do not pay for any students that we transport less than a mile. You're not required to transport less than three and a half miles, but the state does reimburse you over a mile. So that is the norm throughout the state of Missouri, as most districts transport over a mile.
And the, and the school district are responsible for crosswalks and crossing guards?
Potentially. Those are the things we would have to look into. Crossing guards for sure.
Because I'm just going back to years ago, 2015, 14, we had, talking about transportation, because it was huge cost savings going to three and a half miles, and it nearly could have happened. And I think there was some research on that. I'm not sure that that's all, I get that there's major roads and thoroughfares, which would be at the discretion to do, but I'm not sure we would be responsible for a lot of the sidewalks.
That's a correct distinction. We would not have to provide a crossing guard or do the crossing walks. It's something we would want to consider, because if we did say we wanted crossing guards at certain areas, then we would be hiring those people to serve in that role. And then also working again, it would not be our responsibility to put in a sidewalk or to cut a fence or create a path, but we would want to engage with our families, with our communities, to look at those possibilities and areas. Mr. Harmon, to your question, absolutely, there would be more cost savings to make the change with the elementary. Similar probably to the recommendation we're talking now, at least, when we talk about the number of routes we would eliminate. When we first did the roundtable, that was one of the options we looked at. We talked about one mile for everyone at that point. And at that point, a lot of the feedback we received that evening at the roundtable and through the survey after that ranged from some of these logistical and infrastructure issues of being able to make that change right now at the elementaries, as well as the safety concerns. At that point, we did hear a lot more of that from our younger students' parents, you know, when they have not had to walk at all, now to potentially walk up to a mile. And so as of taking that feedback into consideration is why we chose to start with the recommendation of sixth through 12 right now. And as those slides shared, continuing to analyze and look at what impact this would have and what would be the potential future cost savings. I think Vice President Cook is also correct that only doing sixth through 12 will not get us to the 104%. We don't know, though, how close it will get us, because what the reality is, doing that change, it's then how do we reroute? What are the number of miles? There's a lot of other factors, the number of students that actually sign up to continue to ride our buses based on these changes. And so we just wouldn't have even a first round of information, like Ms. Simpson said, until fall of 2024 to know how these changes next year impact efficiency and the overall budget, but continuing to look at all options moving forward.
Other questions?
You mentioned that including the elementary may not be doable to get it done before the school year. Can you elaborate on that?
Because to do this for elementary would mean having to increase the capacity of vacation station, and we don't have the manpower right now to do that. So it would be figuring out what that would look like and then finding the funding to support that. Then most importantly, the biggest cost would be the renovations to our parking lots and looking at adding in some sidewalks in places like you mentioned. And so being able to go out to bid and then get that work done, there's no way that we could get that done over the summer. We're too close in time. Now, could we get it done for next year like you're proposing? We could, for sure. Well, I would think that we could, I should say. I'm going to say for sure. It seems much more doable. It's just a cost that we haven't estimated out right now. It's not built into the preliminary budget planning. Not to say it could be.
Just to clarify to everyone, this amended motion would really give the administration the direction to implement the changes they're proposing, but then also to go ahead and go forward with the elementary schools. And they have one year to look at these plans. If the plans come back and it's not cost-effective, we can always, we can, we can change that or change our mind if the design comes back and it just doesn't make sense. But this, this gives the direction now for something that I think we all know deep down is needed. We make the decision now instead of in October of 2024, in which case we wouldn't be able to implement it for another year. So that, that's the intent of this.
I will say the other thing just to add is that in doing what you're recommending, we may find that it's, it's much easier, I think we will find, it's much easier at some schools than others. So it might be that through the investigation, we determine, yes, these schools are, you know, just lots of variables to consider.
Do we have any idea or thoughts? I know we said October, they get data on how this progresses, the rest of the years, but how long would it take us to do kind of a study and see what improvements might need to be made?
You mean looking at the sites of the elementary schools? No, I think if this is the board's direction, at our leadership team meeting next week, we'll do some backward planning to look at what that goal would be and what would need to be happening this summer when you think about the, who we might need to engage to make some of those decisions around our campuses, working with our principals to look at it. You know, there's a variety of problem solving. You could look at, you know, maybe altering start and end time by a few minutes for different grade levels or last names. I mean, there's a lot of ways to problem solve around it. We just haven't started that yet. So, but it's work that I think we would begin soon, not something we would push off until the fall.
I guess Vice President Cook, one of my concerns is, this reads as we're just giving them, let it go and do it. So should we amend it somehow to be a direction of go and do that study, that cost benefit, and bring that to us at some point in time in the future?
That's, that's, yeah, that's fine with me.
Dr. Rumpus, would you maybe have a recommendation on a timeline that you would like to see and come back to the board? I know, on the spot.
Can I, can I ask a good question? So why would we worry about changing it right now, since we could always come back and amend it? Though we talked about we could come back and amend it, it turned out it's not going to look like it's going to work. We can always come back later anyway, right?
We can. The way it's written though is we're just giving them carte blanche to go, to go and do it, so we may want to put some kind of wording in there, or even just if this is not cost, because the cost isn't justified, that we have that, that you guys bring that back to us for further information, something like that.
One other option could be for the board to approve the recommendation as was presented this evening, and then also direct us to conduct the study and bring back the information. And that would give us a few days to figure out a timeline to make that recommendation. I'm just not comfortable with that. The reality is Ms. Simpson and her department will have to do a lot of that work, and right now, they're focused on, it'll be summer school routing and then getting the changes made even for next year. And so, but I think reasonably late summer, early fall, again, we would want to have this recommendation as early as possible based on the changes that might be needed.
Director Cook, does that suffice for you?
That will suffice.
So you will withdraw? Jane, you get withdrawn?
All right. So how do we follow up? Is it the next meeting then, we'll get a follow-up as an update as to what the cost will be for the plan and the cost for an elementary?
I'm thinking we might want to wait until our new facilities directors on staff, July 1, to work on the actual cost of what it might be. Or, or I'm going to have to probably do some visiting with you all about how you would like me to get those costs put together.
I'm just curious, how are you going to, I'm just curious as to when would be the time for us to expect, or be able to follow up? Which would be the best time for us to follow up in a meeting like this?
I know in the, in the previous district that I was working at, we did some studies on how to change parking lot structures due to significant backlog of cars that would pile up onto the highways. And what we had to do was work with our architect at the time to come in, do a survey of each one of those sites, give some recommendations on how to change traffic flow and plan, and then we had to look at that as the options and come up with the cost associated with that. I don't know if that would be required for every one of our sites. I'm guessing many of, much of that we could figure out on our own, but that, that might be a path we might have to explore with an engineer or someone with a traffic flow expertise.
I believe we could do our best to plan in the next month or two to bring at least a recommendation for a timeline for moving forward. If we can't do it by the May meeting, we'll keep you apprised of that and have it for you by June, but at least there to have a timeline. We just need now to research who might be involved in that, what it might look like. But something we can begin quickly, so that, again, long-term, if we're headed this direction for '24-'25, the sooner our schools know, the sooner our parents know, the better we can do the planning. And so we'd want to do it as quickly as possible. But at least we could bring a plan for how we'll move forward to you at one of the next upcoming meetings.
All right, board, so I would like...
Mr. or President Bertrand, if I could make sure I'm following the dotted line. We had the initial motion to approve the transportation recommendations, which we received a first and a second. And then Vice President Cook amended the motion, and we had a first and a second. Then we had the withdrawal, so that motion is...
Both the first and second, so that pushes that along.
Okay.
We're back to the original motion.
Perfect. Thank you.
Board, I would like, all those in favor of the original motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Thank you. Board, I'd like a motion to approve the staffing changes as presented.
Thank you. As we continue to struggle to fill paraprofessional positions and look for different ways to do our work differently while staying within the Board of Education's approved staffing plan, we are requesting a change to our original plan for '23-'24. We brought something similar to this, to you last month for a couple of other buildings, and now have just a third opportunity. We would like to eliminate three vacant paraprofessional positions on our support staff side of the house to create one certified special education teaching position to support one of our middle schools. This would not create a change in our salary budget as the salaries for the paraprofessional positions would offset the cost of the teaching position, and we would have less benefits cost as we would have one position versus three. And this will allow us to have a different pool of candidates to look at as we meet the needs of our special education students next year.
Board, any discussion?
A paraprofessional does a different role in a special education classroom than a teacher. Is this, how was this decision arrived at? That this is the right...
We agree, Mr. Cook, that paraprofessionals provide such amazing support to our staff in having three different individuals in a, in a building to support our teachers and our staff is different than one. What we have found is it's very difficult to fill those positions, so we're having, we have zero support. And so Dr. Vanderpoel has looked very closely and worked with our staff and looked at how we might do some work different and align some schedules different so that we can at least have that special education teacher in that building to provide that support. Each year that we have tried this on a temporary basis, the last couple of years, we have found some success in supporting our students, and so we're looking forward to doing that next year so that we can have the staff in place to support our students.
Other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. We run the superintendent count.
Earlier this evening, you heard the introduction from the state auditor team. And as they shared, they came a week ago Monday on April 10 for an introductory meeting and immediately began their work interviewing district leadership and trying to understand the current policies and procedures in place to determine the scope of their work. I just wanted to take a moment and thank both our district and building leaders, and especially the finance team. They've already experienced, there's an increased responsibility and responsiveness when that team is here doing their work. And that's going to go on for the next several months. As you saw tonight, though, they are a nice group of people to work with. And you know, they understand that people are trying to do their jobs as well. But it's going to be an extra burden on that finance department for some time. We also agree that we'd continue to share and point out that auditor mo.gov is the site where any of our staff or patrons can share concerns that they may have. We are very excited to congratulate our Hall of Fame winners. This year, the committee selected 10 very deserving deserving recipients from nearly 100 nominees. They have been individually getting surprised and congratulated over the last week. This award started in 1987, and it's really one of the district's highest and most prestigious honors. And it's designed to recognize people who have gone above and beyond in their contributions to the district and how they serve our schools and our students. We will celebrate the 10 winners at a ceremony on May 15. And we are told that the entire list will be pushed out sometime soon. So you can be looking for that on the district's Facebook page, which will show a video of all the winners. I'd like to invite everyone to our Parents as Teachers People in My Neighborhood event that's happening April 25 at Meadows Parkway Early Childhood Center. Many community members will be volunteering for this event where they're going to talk about their occupation. It's hosted jointly by our Parents as Teachers and PALS, our early childhood parent volunteer group. It's open to the entire community, but really especially geared for our early childhood students and their families, and will take place from 6:30 to 8 on Tuesday the 25. As I mentioned at last month's meeting, our senior PALS residents aged 16 and over are invited to a fun evening that will take place on Wednesday, May 3 at Francis Howell Central High School. They are invited to be VIPs at the Junior Chef Cupcake Wars competition that will take place. That's hosted by Sadexo. Students from four of our middle schools will compete in a cupcake bake cupcake bake off. The students have been preparing, and they will bake their cupcakes and be judged on taste, originality, presentation, and teamwork. It's a fun event. And I believe all of you as board members have also been invited invited to attend that night. And the last thing, tomorrow wraps up Public School Volunteer Week, which has taken place this week. It's a time to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of volunteers to public education, and specifically here at Francis Howell. And that includes everything from tutoring and mentoring to chaperoning field trips, assisting in the classroom. You know, volunteers really play a crucial role in supporting the work that we're doing here in the district. During the pandemic, it really changed how we were able to engage some of our parents and community as volunteers. And we've really worked hard this year, being back to normal, to welcome them back into our schools. Through from August through December of this school year, we had 801 new volunteers. And since January, we have 495 more volunteers that signed up. So we currently have just under 1,300 amazing volunteers who are serving our students and supporting our schools. That's really amazing. We want to thank them for everything they do. And that concludes my comments.
Board, any comments?
I would just like to thank this incredible team for all their hard work, the administrative team. They've really worked this last couple of weeks to ensure that the transition from the board and everything were running really well. And I really do appreciate all your hard work and everything that you guys do. Where you guys go.
I just wanted to say that April's World Autism Awareness Month, just happy world, Happy Autism Month.
Yeah, I'd just like to give a brief thank you, first to the Board of Education and to Dr. Wedlock for honoring me here tonight. It was a great chance to be here, and I really enjoyed it. Secondly, I want to thank the board and Dr. Wedlock, as well as all my teachers at Francis Howell High School that have worked really hard to create a fun and inclusive environment that I've enjoyed for four years. And lastly, I just would like to admire all the work that you guys have done and are continuing to do to create a great school district that I can proudly say I will be an alum of soon.
All right. I'd just like to thank all our patrons that are here today that come to the first meeting of the new board. And we'll continue to help come along and struggle with us as we figure this all out. Thanks a lot. I'd like to have a motion